Do you stand and join the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the June 3 meeting of the common council to order please, and will the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor Missolia.
Here.
Counselor Finsland.
Here.
Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck.
Here.
Counselor Esther Dahlbeck.
Recognizing a quorum, and Counselor Bender by remote phone call up here, we'll proceed.
Item number four is approval of the May 20 regular council meeting minutes.
Approved. I've heard the motion in second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 5.1 is the public hearing to consider non-renewal of applicants that were listed in part two of the 2014-15 alcohol report. You do have at your desk tonight an update from Deputy City Clerk Burns advising that all of those licenses have been cleared and are ready for approval. Just need a motion to approve the hook.
You've heard the motion in second to approve the licenses mentioned. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. I'd like to move, if you will, item 8.1 under the mayor's business to this part and the, to this moment in the meeting for Chancellor Walker to do a presentation. Motion to approve. Heard a motion in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Chancellor Walker, welcome.
So I promised Councilman Bender that I would not do a PowerPoint like the typical academic, but I did bring a handout if there's a way to distribute this that sort of has a summary of some of the things I'd like to talk about. And first of all, I want to say thank you always to the city and to you for your support of the university. It means a great deal because we really consider ourselves to be a vital part of what happens here. And what I wanted to do tonight is just give you a real quick nutshell update of kind of where the university is and where we're headed, both to talk about strategic direction, but also some things you may or may not have been reading about lately. This is really an exciting time despite all the challenges that are out there. The university for the past year has undergone an extensive strategic planning process, so really trying to figure out how are we going to best position ourselves for the future. The landscape looks very different than the last time we did this, which is all the way back in 2008. We know that our states are not supporting us the way that they have in the past. Our student demographics look very different than they have. The way the national scene is operating is holding us to different kinds of standards than they ever have before. So if you think about No Child Left Behind, we're sort of seeing the same kind of mentality in higher ed. And it was time to really take a step back and think about our position. So what we announced a couple of weeks ago was our new strategic plan. It's kind of ironic because the little symbol that was developed, you'll notice it has little stars on it. And when we were actually, that was done over a year ago, and when we were thinking about, well, what mnemonic can we have for our four initiatives, star was what emerged. So our graphic designer, Ellen Fury, was really very prescient when she came up with this design. So let me talk a little bit about what those themes are. Star, the student experience. T, thriving partnerships. A, achieving excellence. And R for resource management. So let's talk about the student experience. I think one of the things that makes the university really great and very special is the way that we're able to interact with students. Our size makes their accessibility to us as faculty and staff much easier than they would someplace else. And what we want to do is to make sure that what happens in the classroom provides a good bridge for what their life is going to be like once they graduate. So you're seeing a much more deliberate effort, first of all, on things like experiential learning, you know, getting out there. We think that that experience is the best teacher, getting out there, taking what they're doing in the classroom, and practicing it. So much greater emphasis there. Also, in terms of career preparation or graduate school, you know, some students go on to graduate school, but we all know that they're going to do some kind of work if they're not going to graduate school once they get out. How do we help best prepare them for what that life looks like? And combining what we call the curricular experience, what they do in the classroom, with all the, what we call extracurricular stuff, the clubs, activities on the class, on the campus. So those kinds of things are what we want to really work on and flesh out in terms of the student experience. The T is thriving partnerships. You know, when I was inaugurated, my theme was partnerships for progress, and I really truly believe that universities need to be a vital part of the community in which they live and work. And so forging tighter ties, in fact, we're actually changing the mission statement to include some language that says, "to engage the community and the region." So that part of it is explicitly now going to be a part of the mission that gets published to everyone everywhere going forward. That means we need your help. We're going to be looking to the community to engage us with things like advisory boards, business advisory boards. How can we, the university, best meet industry needs that are local to help this community thrive? So you'll see a lot more emphasis on building that. We'll also be creating a center for community engaged learning. And again, what that means is we want to get students out from inside the walls of the classroom, out into the community. I mean, some of you have probably had students who have done academic service learning, and I think they did it for Councilman Bender when they helped with the newsletter. It's those kinds of things that we will see more happening. Achieving excellence means that we want to, number one, attract students that we think are going to be successful here, that are the right fit, and also to reward employees, to really help promote excellence. And so working on things like, how do we compensate people? Unfortunately, Wisconsin has fallen behind. We're 18 percent behind the national average in terms of compensating employees for like kinds of institutions. That's a problem because we want to attract the best and the brightest to help teach our students. So really focusing on dealing with compensation issues. And finally, resource management, which means like any institution, any agency, we need to make sure that we're good stewards of our resources. Number one, that we've got planning mechanisms that help tie in our goals, and also to make sure that when we do things, that we're doing them deliberately. So matching our actions with the strategic plan. You'll see also part of it is having to do with the campus master plan, for instance, and that's talking about resources. So how do we align our vision of what we think the campus should be with where the city is headed, especially with all of the new kinds of initiatives that are going on citywide? So we really are working to make that partnership effective. And you'll see kind of a summary of this on the back of the sheet. You can find our whole plan online at uwsuper.edu, so you can see all of the various goals and you can see the sub-action steps that are there if you have any questions about direction. I'm very excited about it. I'm most excited, I think, about the community engagement part because I just think that there are so many ways that we can help each other in a win-win situation to help the city achieve its goals and to make that a great working relationship. So that's the part I think I'm the most excited about. Now, some things you might have heard about as well is another process that we engaged in during the semester, and that was called program prioritization. I wish I could say that was unique to us, but it really is a phenomenon that's been happening nationwide. As states have started to disinvest in their higher education institutions, institutions have had to respond, just like any business has to respond with a changing environment. So we went through a semester, well, actually longer than a semester-long process, to look at all of our programs, academic, non-academic, to look at what can we stop doing? You know, how can we really focus? We've got the strategic plan, we knew the directions, how do we stop doing some things that, it's not saying they're not good things, but you can't do it all. So where do you focus? So stopping some things, where do we start some things, and where are some areas that we need to invest in? And so what you saw was some of the press related to some of the things that we've decided to stop doing, programs with very small enrollments. You know, you just can't keep, keep those things around because it doesn't allow you then to focus on things that can be really productive. We decided to move athletic conferences, for instance, to the UMAC. We are very excited about this, I think, because most of all, it's going to be a better student experience. Students aren't going to have to travel as far. We, we did an estimate, and I think for the women's basketball team alone, they were going to save 100 hours on the road. That's a whole lot of time, nonetheless to say expense involved with traveling. We think the local competition will be good, parents will be able to come to games, more students will be able to support their classmates. We kind of like certain rivalries that might develop. So we're thinking that the move to the UMAC is going to, I think, help us grow enrollments, but also be, I think, something that'll help add to vitality to the, to the teens. We're also looking at all campus operations, trying to figure out where can efficiencies be. And as tough as it is sometimes to have those conversations, every business goes through having to look at it because if you never ask the question, you can never come back and say, "Well, we looked at everything." And some things are purely investigative, we don't know what they're going to turn up, but we have to be responsible stewards with our resources and to look at what might happen. So some people have, I think I heard one person today, I was actually kind of surprised, say, "Are they going to close the university?" It's like, absolutely no, they are not going to close the university. In some ways, what we're going through is very normal. It's part of that new normal that you see going on out there as the entire country and entire higher education spectrum is really grappling with disinvestment by states. So we don't plan to go anywhere. In fact, part of the reason why we're doing what we're doing is because we want to be here in the future to support the community and support the region. So I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Questions of the chancellor? Counselor Herrick?
I just want to say thank you for coming and give us an update. That's interesting, and I think, I think it's a good program, so thank you.
Thanks.
We very much appreciate your leadership and your community involvement, for sure, and the university. We're strong supporters of the university, the campus, and, and your administration, so thank you so much.
Thanks. I appreciate the time to, to be able to update you.
Thank you.
Item number six is the consent agenda. There are two additions that you have before you tonight. There are sidewalk cafe license applications, one by Herbert and Gerberts, and one by VIP. Those will be referred to license and fees committee.
Heard the motion in second to approve the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.1, Finance Director Vito is submitting the updated...
On the consent agenda, I had one question.
I'm sorry.
On license and fees, the 6, 7, 6, 8, and 6, 9, I just want to make sure that the fire chief and the police chief are okay with approving those?
We're in the process of getting those approvals.
Oh, okay.
Committee, yeah.
All right.
7.1, Finance Director Vito is submitting the updated 2014 through 2019 capital improvement program budget.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Good evening, everyone. I hope to keep my presentation fairly brief on the financials, but get to the point that you're probably more interested in, and that's some question and answer on the actual projects that will be, that we're currently working on and that we're proposing for the upcoming years. So this is what's on for the agenda for this item tonight, just a very brief history of our program. And we do have one request of the council. We would like authorization to change the length of the program that we're, that we're adopting. What, what I will focus on is really how our, our funding sources of our capital improvement program have somewhat drastically changed over the last, I would say, 10 years. And then touch briefly on new debt policy. It's still in the works in our finance committee, but we're hoping to get that approved next week. And then open it up for questions and answers on our, on our projects. So we had our first program, it began in 1997, and you'll see for all of the following periods there, we had a three-year program. Up until 2012, then we moved to a six-year program, and the purpose of that is that we simply wanted to have a, a longer vision out into the future beyond just a couple of years. So the, the request that we have for, for the council to consider is making it more of what I refer to as a rolling five-year capital program. Instead of it being just covering the years 2012 to 2017, we would look at, for example, tonight, we'll look at seeking informal adoption of the 2015 projects and tentative approval for 2016 to 2019, and then next year at this, at this time, just add on one year and ask for formal approval of 2016, and then adding on another year at the end. So we have a, a five-year view all the time. As I mentioned, we do have a number of funding changes, and you've probably heard me talk a lot in the last few years about the levy limits within our, our general fund. And just as Chancellor Walker was saying just before me, the state is definitely having an effect on, on our local budgets here. And because our general fund used to be a very significant contributor of funding to our capital improvement program, as we've had levy limits for, I believe, the last eight years or so, that, that funding source has become more and more difficult to continue maintaining as a source from our general fund. And so in a moment, I have some slides that will give more of a visual on this. This is a pie chart of our total funding sources for, I just picked 10 years ago, the 2003 to 2005 program. And you'll see here that this section is, is debt that we issued to cover this, this program. And the, the orange color, 48 percent, were transfers from our general fund. And so it's, you can easily see that between the general fund and the issuance of debt, that pretty much covered how we pay for our capital program. We had a few other smaller revenue sources, some interest income. And then for the program after this, looks very similar, still have roughly half is funded by debt. And the same thing for the 2009, but then we'll start to see some things shifting here where this is where the general fund transfers start being reduced. We have one new, one new part of the pie here, that's the oil pipeline terminal tax. And that, that funding some years ago was designated to be used both for the reduction of debt future, or of debt payments, but also for economic development. And Mayor Hagan recommended that we use more of that to kind of beef up our capital program, but we still do have about 25 percent of that that goes into our economic development fund to help us with incentives for, for projects that aren't in our tax increment finance districts. Now, the next, the next pie chart is where everything starts to change. And don't be so concerned that it's, it covers many, many more years. What I've done is I've extended it from the 2012 program all the way through to 2019. So the point I wanted to make with this is this piece of the pie right here, that we are now, we have now shifted to having debt cover 63 percent of our program. And that's a, it's a big change. It's something I wanted the council to be very aware of. And then this piece, it's now down to 8 percent that comes from the general fund. And the color switched on this, this is the piece for the oil pipeline terminal tax. That, that source of funding has, has gone up from something, I think it was 650,000 in the first year that we received that tax, it's now up to closer to 1.3, 1.4 million. So we've, we've seen a nice increase in that, that funding source. The next slide I have puts, puts the previous slides, oops, sorry, into numbers format. It just gives you, it shows here that debt used to be 43 percent, it's now 63 percent. And the biggest change here is, again, the general fund going from funding half the program down to really very little. So because of this shift in the funding of our program, and because we were relying more and more on debt, we, we didn't actually have a debt policy before, and we think it's very wise to have one now. I can tell you that in, as far as our limits for what we could issue in debt, we're significantly below those limits, but that doesn't mean it's a good idea to be pushing those limits either because that simply translates into very significant increases in the, in the tax levy. So the policy, again, is before the finance committee for next Thursday. And really, the goal of that policy is to give us parameters and help make the decisions easier. If we know exactly what levels of debt are, are sound levels of debt, it makes the decisions easier when we're looking at how much, how much can we spend on, on the larger ticket items in our capital improvement program. We also think that having the policy will help us hopefully to maintain our bond rating, or we always have the goal of trying to increase that bond rating, but at a minimum, we want to, want to at least keep it at the same. I won't be getting too much into these other two items here, but I just want to make a comment that the debt policy is only one of seven parts that the analysts look at when they give us our bond rating. And there's other factors that play in even, even more heavily than debt, and that's the economy, that, that rates very strongly, whatever, are things going well in Superior, in Wisconsin, in the United States, they take all those things into consideration. I've mentioned this a number of times, they look at management, they look at administration, they look at the mayor and the council, and are we all getting along? Are we doing good things? Are things controversial? They will read our, our local newspapers, and they absolutely will know what's happening, and they'll ask us a lot of questions on those things, so. Budgetary performance and flexibility, this is getting more difficult because as we have our levy limits, our budgets have become tighter and tighter. And at finance committee next week, I'll be, I think I mentioned this at our retreat, the general fund budget for 2013, it came in that revenue was higher than expenses by $22,000, and that's really, really cutting it close. So they look at those kind of things, too. What I haven't done in the past, when we've been discussing the capital improvement program, is give you a real specific overview of what will happen when we issue debt. And later on in the agenda, we have three resolutions to begin that process of issuing debt, and it does relate to this capital improvement program. So what I wanted to do, to keep you as best informed as possible, is tell you what, what is the effect of issuing the debt if the council chooses to do that later in the agenda? For this year, the, the debt service that is covered by our tax levy is 1,803,000. If we did nothing, if we issued no more debt this year, that would go down to one, just under 1,670,000. So some of our debt service is dropping off each year, but the new debt service on the new proposed debt is an additional, close to 200,000. So if the council does approve that, we are moving from 1,803 to 1,863. So that's just FYI to you that, once you approve issuing the debt, it's at that time that you're approving the tax levy to pay that debt back. So that will be a change of about $60,000. At this point, I would, I would open it up. I have distributed the, the big sheet of paper, I don't have mine with me, the big sheet on one, in the council packets, I think there's two sheets. And then there's extras that are on both sides. But there's a side that has the red on the top, that is the actual program that is already adopted by council. And that was adopted back in November of 2013. On the, on the other side, I think it's attachment B, you'll see that it's extended out to 2019. And just to keep track of what is new and different, I put anything in the red font is different than what you've already adopted. So, what we are asking the council to approve tonight would be the 2015 column, but we also have some changes for 2014 that are requested. And I have one additional request that I just got clarification on about a half hour ago, and that is related to the Fairlawn Museum, the first line repairing, I'm sorry, finished painting exterior and repairing exterior windows, that 80,000 that's slated for 2015, they'd like to have that moved up to 2014 because the feeling is, is that if they can do that this year, there's another line item for $200,000 later on that we can, we can then wait until 2017 to do additional painting. So that's the only change I have from what was, what you've received. And I think I'll just open it up for questions on any of the projects, whether it's projects from 2012, 2013, if you're looking for status updates from administration, or if you have any questions on the, the whole color coding of this. I've, I've kind of color-coded what the bonding projects would be. And you'll also notice, one final comment I'll make before opening it up, the bottom right, reductions needed of $559,000. So if the council approves, tentatively approving the 2016 to 19, I would ask that the motion is made contingent upon those reductions or additional revenue sources.
Heard a motion in multiple seconds to approve, open up for discussion. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Chair. Is it true that the percentage of our debt keeps increasing, but that's a self-directed increase? If we choose not to do that, then we don't do it.
Yeah, if you, if you choose not, for example, if you chose not to issue debt tonight, that the debt issue is for $2,845,000, we would be asking for reductions of $2,845,000 in the program that you have before you.
Or if we chose not to do the whole, so that is a self-directed percentage?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So that's not a, okay, that's not a solid figure. We can, that can be moved up or moved down?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Gene, did we have any, looking at the 213, 2013, the Tower Avenue project of $4,100, do we have any contingency left that would reduce that bottom right-hand number of reductions needed?
That's a good question. I think we're coming in pretty close, but Jeff, what do you, what are your recollections on that?
Yeah, counsel, there are, there are some funds that are left, but the project hasn't been closed out, so we've been hesitant to do, use those to offset anything else until we are completely done with the project, and that should be here in the next month or so. So, yeah, but there are still, the last calendar is at least, I think, a quarter million or something left there.
Okay, so I guess my question is, can we use, if we needed to use contingency dollars to reduce the bottom right-hand number, is, is that an area we could use that money?
Yep, yep, we could. And, and this, this CIP gets reb... And, and this, this CIP gets revised many, many times. And I would imagine we'll probably be gathering here in six months and talking about changes that we need for updates on projects. So if we find out at that time, Counselor, that Tower Avenue really only needed 3.9, then we can, yeah, we can reduce that and reduce the, the gap there.
I, I have not a question, but a point of clarification as far as the percentage of debt in relationship to the debt level that we could be at as a maximum in line with bond rating and so forth. And I guess it is a question. Our percentage of debt is pretty low. Am I correct?
That's correct, Mayor. We have, I'm going to go by memory here, a statutory limit of 5% of our equalized value that we can have in general obligation debt. And I think that limit is somewhere around the $78 million range. And we're closer to low 40s, like 40, 41 million. And as a part of the, the debt policy that's in Finance Committee, one of the goals of the policy is to be at, I think 75% would be the maximum that we would go of our available capacity of debt. And I don't have the policy in front of me, but we're, there are absolutely no intentions of climbing up towards that limit because that would be another 30 million or so in debt, 35 million, and that would have a huge impact on the tax levy.
The reason I, the reason I raise it is the fact that our debt, our, our bond rating is consistently favorable, and this is one reason for that.
Yes.
Other discussion questions of the Finance Director? If not, thank you.
I think you, Gene, you, oh, we have a question?
I've got on the.
We have a motion on the floor.
No second. I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You indicated that you need that motion to informally approve 2015 and tentatively approve 2016 through 19 contingent upon either reductions or revenue increases of 559,000?
Correct. And just for the record, if we could get that, we get your approval for changes to 2014 as well, that would be, we'd have it all covered.
Okay. There's a motion and second to, to adopt. There's also a requirement for a motion preliminary to that to change the 2014 by moving 80,000 for the Fairlawn Sandstone Foundation patching from 14, or 15 to, into 14. Is there a motion to?
Windows.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now you have a motion on the floor to approve.
I think they approved everything.
Oh, that, okay, I'll, I'll, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is a recommendation that we move the resolutions up to this point in the agenda to accommodate Attorney Totti, so he doesn't have to sit.
Heard a motion and second to move the resolutions, 10.1 through 10.4, I'm sorry, Move it up on the agenda to where we are at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Item 10.1 is the initial resolution of the City of Superior relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $2,845,000 for the street improvement programs. And also attached is the Finance Director pre-report, pre-sale report.
What is the pleasure?
Second.
Heard a motion and second to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.2 is a resolution relating to the issuance and sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds.
Heard the motion and second. Discussion? Hearing is seen, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.3 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2014A, Ambisity of Superior, Wisconsin.
Motion approved.
Heard a motion and second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
10.4 is a resolution approving the project plan, project area plan for the City of Superior, East 8th Street, single-family housing project.
Motion approved.
Heard a motion and second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item 10.5 is a resolution of the Common Council authorizing the transfer of property located between East 8th and East 9th Streets, between 18th and 19th Avenues East, to the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior.
Motion approved.
Heard the motion in multiple seconds. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
10.6 is a resolution setting a public hearing July 1st to rezone property located between Lambert and Weeks Avenue, beginning at North 57th Street, south for approximately 250 feet from suburban District 2, R1B, one-family residential.
What is the pleasure?
Second.
Heard a motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
10.7 is a resolution concerning the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for 2013.
Motion approved.
Heard a motion and second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Back to item 7.2. Planning Director Circa submitting a request from Janice Stevens, Superior School District Administrator, to waive the approximate 400 and, $4,400 permit fees for the stadium seating and storage area at the new NBC Spartan Sports Complex.
Motion approved.
Heard the motion and second to approve. All in favor, I'm sorry, Counselor Delby.
I just want to say, we did this before when the YMCA put their expansion on. So follows through, we should do it for them.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
7.3, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending awarding the East 5th Street Reconstruction Project to James Peterson's, James Peterson Sons, Inc., for the low bid of $2,252,420.46.
Motion approved.
Heard the motion and second to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item 8.2, Mayor Hagan is recommending approval of the following committee appointments: Chris Sislow and Brent Fennessy to the Plan Commission, and John Conway to the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior.
What is the pleasure? Heard a motion and second. All in fa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 8.3, Mayor Hagan is recommending, recommending approval of the Classification and Compensation Study for the City of Superior to Carlson Detman Consulting of Middleton, Wisconsin, in the amount of $30,000 plus travel expenses. This was tabled from the May 20th council meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Heard a motion and second. Discussion? I should say that Mr. Carlson is here this evening to field, answer any questions that may be forwarded by the council. I know there's some discussion and a lot of questions that came up at the last meeting and subsequent to that, so we'll be able to handle, hopefully handle those questions. I want to say the reason for this particular study was several-fold. One is that it is part and parcel to the two-phase, two-phase proposal that I put before the council some time ago. And the reason for the two-phase proposal was, at least my belief, that over the years, not intentional, but somewhat arduous because of legislation and so forth and other concerns, the, the city employees, in my opinion, again, have not had proper reward, not both in just monetary, but classification review. As you know, the, the city force has been reduced over a period of time. Example being, let's talk about Park and Rec. I used to have like 28 employees, you're down about nine. And it's replicated through, through the other operations of the city. But that, that in and of itself has required, perhaps required, extra attention by employees to pick up the slack for services that were not reduced. In fact, our services, I think, are exceptional with regard to not just the service itself, the performance, but also the fact that we haven't reduced services, like many, at least many communities that I'm aware of, not just across the state of Wisconsin, but others. And with that, there may have been additional responsibilities put on the plate, if you will, for employees in all areas of, of our operations. So the purpose of the study is to do just that. Study it, bring it back to the council, and let the council be the action authority for whatever they want to do, whatever the study provides and how it should shake out. So the study isn't all-inclusive in itself, it's basically a start for a report that's from a neutral party that would bring back, and then the council would be the dictating authority or the deciding authority as to what they want to do with it, part, parcel, or moving forward. The second reason is, and I have to compliment Kami, the Human Resources Director for this, I asked her to move this up in a more confined, constricted time, time element so that whatever this study and whatever actions may be wished, not wished, adopted or passed by the council with regard to what the study outcome is, whatever that may be, if at all, it would be available for a deeper discussion with regard, regard to budget review. It starts in September. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Carlson, Carlson, Detman Carlson, and he's offered to come up here free of charge, I guess, to, to field any questions and just carry out the discussion that we have.
Mayor, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to spend a little time for you. I'll try to make my comments brief and make sure I have plenty of opportunity to answer the questions that you have. This is an important piece of business. I was sitting here watching your capital improvements discussions and so forth, and going back to, I've been to a lot of city council meetings over the last 40 years. 90% of my career in human resource management in Wisconsin predates Act 10. There are others in this business of compensation management that have seized upon Act 10 as an opportunity to descend upon Wisconsin and offer services. The types of things that we do are stock and trade, and we've been doing it for a very long time. I've had the pleasure in my career to work in, I was counting them up when I was sitting there, probably a dozen states, including the District of Columbia, from coast to coast, north to south. And one of the things I try to make sure that I emphasize in, in any project that we do, is that having had the opportunity to spend a lot of time with public employees across the United States, I'll put public employees in the state of Wisconsin up against anybody, anywhere in the United States. And we just have a wonderful public service in this state, and I'm proud to have had a chance to maybe make a contribution here or there. The last time I was in this room is for the adoption of the county's comprehensive pay plan by the county board, which was unanimous vote. The county administrator is here tonight, is well-volunteered to come in and be available to answer any questions that you might have of that project, what they learned, what went well, what didn't go well. I would describe it as a very successful project. It was well-designed by the county. It involves substantial input from a ad hoc steering committee. And I know you've got a committee that is formed to steer this project. In fact, they recommended our firm be selected. So I know a little bit about the neighborhood. I've, I've been here working on that project. We certainly are interested in doing yours. Make no mistake, though, Act 10 changed the world that we work in. In this way, I'm a former labor negotiator. I've negotiated 250 labor agreements or so in this state. I've also carried a union card as a member of the Communication Workers of America. I know how collective bargaining works. And Act 10 essentially turned our world upside down in terms of how we engage in pay determination in the public sector. However, we were doing the work that we do in Wisconsin before Act 10, and in fact, did it at the request of public employee unions who were struggling with their own classification issues and bargaining units they represented. Specifically, I've done work with both AFSCME and the Teamsters in various locations successfully. What's different now, of course, is that the determination of a pay plan rests solely on the city council. You cannot negotiate it. It is against the law, so we're told. I understand that law is still under review, and we're probably going to get a decision out of the Wisconsin Supreme Court any time. I have no idea what that decision might be, but until it comes down, we've got work to do. I think the, the, one of the things that I like about your project is that you're viewing it strategically, like you view your capital improvements plan. You've got a strategic vision of what you're trying to accomplish. And essentially what a compensation plan is, is lays the foundation for moving forward with your human resource program. In my business, we really don't talk about compensation as a standalone item. We talk about total rewards management, which is the entire environment, not just the question of compensation. And in your project, a couple of things we would be doing in addition to making recommendations to you on base pay administration, is to help you develop a viewpoint on total compensation management, which means we're measuring the cost and value of fringe benefits as well, and assessing the capability of your performance management system to figure out how that can interweave with your compensation program. And I would suggest that most public employers across the state are struggling with that item. Probably the most difficult job in a post-Act 10 world is the job of a first-line supervisor because they've spent most of their careers, or all their careers virtually, working under the notion of managing under a union contract. Many of them were promoted out of the union. And now they're having to do things in an entirely different way based upon handbooks and new responsibilities, et cetera. So in developing a pay plan for you, because I'm sometimes asked this, you know, do I have some sort of a bias in favor of one pay plan or another? And the answer is no. It has to be appropriate for the environment that we're working in. So there are three major policy questions. If you hire us to do this job, I've got to come back and talk to you again about some policy matters. And let me tell you what those three questions are, and you can mull them over. Question number one is, well, who do you want to compare yourselves to? I mean, this notion of compensation is not just an internal matter. There is a question, are we competitive? And in talking with your human resource department, I'm aware that there are some concerns that you're not competitive. You're having difficulty attracting applicants. So we'll do an assessment of what that actually amounts to, but then we got to come back and talk to you, typically bringing back a list of communities that we think, based upon geography, demographic characteristics, household income, equalized value per capita, population, et cetera, might be decent matches for you to look at. We'll also talk to you about to what extent do you wish to look at what private sector employers are doing. I have a few public employers that say we don't want to pay any attention to the private sector, but they're pretty much in the minority these days because when we're recruiting, we're competing against the private sector. Second question. Well, once we've figured out who we're going to compare you to, what position do you want to take in that marketplace? You want to be a high payer? I don't get a lot of that. Do you want to be a low payer? Or in the middle? Or some combination of those? I actually have a client I'll be meeting with Monday that has decided it wants to place itself. itself at the 75th percentile because its median housing values in the community are at the 75th percentile, and only 10% of the employees of the city are living in the community, and they think that's a problem. So, that's question number two, what position in that marketplace? And most people aren't going to answer that question until they see the data to see how they stack up. The third question is the biggie. In the future, how do you get a raise around here? Cost of living? A step increase on a step plan? Pay for performance? Or some combination? And the city council is the only body that can make that decision. The mayor doesn't get to make it, human resources doesn't get to make it, and your consultant certainly doesn't get to make it. My job is to keep you from making a mistake by making sure you're making the best-informed decision and you're picking something that you can live with consistently. So, the process that we follow in our studies is the same everywhere, but the product and the end result is unique to the culture of the organization and the community. We rely upon the employees to provide the base data necessary to do our work. Every employee will have an opportunity to complete a job description questionnaire documenting their job responsibilities. We ask that those questionnaires be reviewed by their manager and commented on, but we specifically instruct, no manager is to tell an employee what to put down. We then interview the department heads, once we've had a chance to read all the questionnaires, to make sure we understand them, and to make sure we understand the dynamics in the department. As mentioned earlier, you've gone through considerable consolidation of programs. That's pretty typical of what I see around the state, pretty typical of what I see around the country. When that happens, jobs change. If a 30-year employee is going to retire by the end of the year, I'll guarantee you two or three jobs within that department are going to change as well. That's what happens when a senior employee leaves. All that experience walks out the door, and a lot of duties get redistributed. So, we will then analyze all that information using a point factor job evaluation system, which we've used for decades, highly reliable, very predictive, and does an excellent job of analyzing job content, and gives us a uniform way of looking at people across a lot of different kinds of jobs, using a uniform measuring stick. It's very important in organizations, and I would suggest particularly in public organizations where everybody gets to know what everybody makes, people worry a lot about internal fairness. Internal equity matters a lot to people, and if it doesn't exist, it's extremely dysfunctional within an organization. Now, I know through four decades of collective bargaining that bargaining essentially is a political process, it is not a logical process. And the individual needs of employees and their classifications quite often are subordinate to the overall good of the group, and so individual differences in jobs can get lost in the shuffle. One of the things that I want you to reflect upon as you decide whether you want to do this or not is your legal obligation under federal law, under the Equal Pay Act, to not discriminate against employees based upon issues of gender, age, and the other protected classifications, the various provisions of the Fair Labor Standards Act, and whether or not people receive overtime or don't receive overtime based upon their exempt or non-exempt status. This is an area that is governed by an immense body of law for which you're responsible and accountable. I said to the finance director today, we were chatting, getting to know each other a little bit, and I said, you know, it's always sort of amazed me in my business is that you folks in finance, you have to go through an annual audit of the books. It's appropriate. You bring in an outside auditor, the auditor looks at expenditures and says, was money spent in the way you folks intended it to be spent? Yet, 70 to 80% of our operating costs are in people. And how often do we audit our human resource systems to determine whether or not those relationships are appropriate? I also want you to understand that if you do this, it's a starting point, not a finishing point. So, one of the things we will deliver to you is a process for keeping your system up to date. So, as jobs change in the future, you don't go through another study, you simply give employees an opportunity to document those changes and get a review on a periodic basis. So, it's a system, not a study, that you can manage. Sometimes people will say to me, well, geez, why don't we just do this ourselves? I say it's a lot like trying to do open-heart surgery with somebody issuing you a scalpel and a mirror and say, have a good time. It's complex, it can be bloody, and it's really hard to survive. We don't have a dog in a fight. Our only obligation is to be fair and accurate, and to make sure you get what you want as a result. My job is to make sure you understand what those wants are and the implications of your So, the process we would follow would be very similar to the process the county followed in its successful study, but you're not the county board of supervisors, you're the city council of the city of Superior, and your needs and what you want may be different. I just need to know that you're committed to working with us to make sure that we understand what you want and that we give it to you in a form that is legal, defensible, and fair. We sometimes say in this business, I was in front of an employee listening group, we rolled out a pay plan in front for 800 school district employees, and Board of Education held listening sessions, and I was there last night, sitting with the board and answering questions for a couple hours that employees had, and this is sensitive stuff. People take this really seriously, and we're not in a happiness business. The politics of this stuff is difficult. Everybody would like to have more. The one thing I'll tell you absolutely is I will not do a project if there is any expectation on the part of the client that I'm going to recommend somebody's pay be reduced. I'm out of here. I've never done one, I'll never do one. The most, the worst thing that'll ever happen to a public employee in a study that we do is when we're done, they'll be making the same money as the day we walked in the door. Now, we were lucky, fortunate in the Douglas County study, I believe it's true, Andy, no position was red-circled or frozen. I can't tell you that's what will happen here. I don't know until we do the study. But I will tell you, if we identify situations where we believe employees are paid higher than their pay range calls for, the most we will do is recommend a freeze, and in many cases, we have clients that continue to grant cost of living increases, maybe not to the base salary, but as a bonus or a flat cash payment. So, I wanted to make sure in speaking with you, in fact, I was, I was personally, I was glad that you'd been able to lay this thing over to tonight because I really like to get in front of folks and say, listen, I want you to understand what you're in for, what you're doing, what we're asking you to do, that you have a role in this, a big role, and ultimately, you're the ones that are going to be asked to adopt a pay plan, that you'll have your fingerprints all over. This will not be the consultant's pay plan, this will be the city of Superior's pay plan. What questions can I answer for you?
I submitted to Human Resources a list of questions. They basically covered two areas. Number one, I wanted to know if, when we evaluated our current employees, that all salaries, wages, fringe benefits were in that mix, so we had a starting point that was accurate. That's number one. Number two is what you've alluded to, I'm very concerned that we have a, our evaluation process or our benchmarks are accurate and can be used for our needs. Those are my, and then I sub, I went to apnauseia in writing up questions, but then, and I --
They were good.
My last question, my last statement was, I have more, but those are the basic two areas that I think cover everything else that I would want to know.
I take it that means I don't have to worry about your involvement?
No. So, those will be my two questions. Could you speak to those?
Yes, I will. The benchmarking issue I hope I addressed is, is we will come to you with a set of demographics and considerations, but then ask you to make the final determination of which benchmarks are appropriate, which organizations we're going to compare ourselves to. The question of total compensation is part of our package, and I was talking with the finance department today, I said, look, I got to prepare you for this, you're going to get a spreadsheet from us asking you to identify the major categories of employee benefit costs within the city by employee group, and we will then feed that back to you and compare us into some norms, showing you what your costs are relative to others, and we're prob, and I would expect we're going to have a meaningful dialogue about some of those benefits and their respective costs. Now, I will tell you this, my standard response on, sometimes I'll have a member of a city council say, well, if our benefits are so expensive, if that's the case, shouldn't we pay less? And the answer is no, because when you're out in the marketplace hiring employees, they're not paying attention to your benefit costs, they want to know what the paycheck is going to look like. If you have a problem with a benefit program, manage your benefit program differently. And if there are issues and that need attention, I assure you, we will point those out to
Commissioner Olson?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we be able to address our speaker more than twice like we normally do. So, if I could, sir, I'd like to ask a couple of questions of you. You stated that once we, if we consider awarding this contract to you, then you're going to come back and tell us who we want to be compared to? Isn't that a little backwards?
Well, I didn't intend to say it that way. Let me, let me see if I can make sure I'm absolutely clear. First of all, I'm never going to tell you who you can be compared to. That's not my job. My job is to offer up a starting point list of organizations that would seem to us professionally constitute a reasonable group to look at, but then we're going to dialogue about that. And if you're like most elected bodies I deal with, you're going to think of a few I don't have. We'll talk about it, you'll say, well, should we consider this? We'll go back to the drawing board, take a look at what those comparisons look like and what the data looks like, but ultimately, that list of comparisons is one you will make, not us as consultants. Now, do we do that before you award the contract? No. That's part of our work product, that's part of what we do for a living, is to put you through that drill. And so, but it's a very early on part of the project. We'll start the project by getting employees documenting their jobs. Two things happen at the same time, we're going to measure markets and measure jobs. And so, we'll ask employees to start documenting their positions, run those orientation sessions, et cetera, and when we're here doing those orientation sessions with employees and getting them started, we'll ask you to come back, perhaps in a committee of the whole or however is most convenient to you, and we'll have a work session and have a conversation about that comparability issue, so that we get adequate direction from you so we can get working on gathering that data.
Okay. Another question then, where are you with legal battle with Stevens Point?
There isn't any. There was a, let me address that specifically. Because it was misrepresented in the press, subsequently clarified by me to the press but not clarified to the public. The city of Stevens Point contracted with us to do a study pretty much exactly like this one. And they indicated that in the course of the study, they wanted some additional data, and we said we'd be happy to provide it. However, the data that we've collected is a proprietary product. We run a database, we manage a database, we're collecting data. I've got a master's degree industrial relations guy with 15 years of experience that spends every living waking hour collecting data and analyzing it. And I said, I'd be happy to sit down with you folks and discuss this and go through it in detail, but you got to understand the data itself is a trade secret, and you're going to need to do that in closed session. They didn't want to do that. The council then said, the committee, HR committee, said, well, we want to be involved in employee appeals. I said, that's fine, be happy to accommodate you. Our point factor job evaluation system also is proprietary product, and we're prepared to discuss with you the levels of rating for any position you wish to look at, provided you'll honor the trade secrets protection that's afforded to us under Wisconsin law. They didn't want to do that. I talked with the mayor, the mayor said, I agree with your position. I talked with the city attorney, the city attorney advised the city, Carlson Detman is right. There is no legal dispute. The newspaper reported that we had walked away from our contract with the city and said we wouldn't provide service. That's not what happened. I discussed the appeals with the mayor, and the mayor said, given the difficulty I'm having with the city council, sometimes that happens in cities, you know, given the difficulty I'm having, I just assumed run these appeals myself, and we had an agreement that on any job in which he wasn't clear, he could pick up the phone and call me, and we would discuss The newspaper reported that as us having walked away. I subsequently emailed the reporter, and I said, that's not what happened, and I told him exactly what happened. The reporter got back to me and he said, oh, yeah, well, that's not what I understood. I sent the email to the mayor and the city attorney, and they both said, yep, that's the version that's right. There's no dispute.
So, you're not working for them, though?
Sure I am. I just got a request from the housing, from the executive director of the Housing Authority. I'm also doing the pay plan for the city of Stevens Point School District. I was with them last night, ran listening sessions for a pay plan affecting 800 employees. I'm up to my ears in Stevens Point.
Can you tell me what your formula is as to what you're going to determine how you are going to determine what the wages are, or is that proprietary?
No, it's not. When we're, when we've collected When, when we're, when we've collected the data, once you've said these are the comparables that are appropriate, and we've collected the data, and we've talked through with you how we're going to weight that data and consider it, and we've picked the benchmarked jobs we're going to measure, and we've evaluated those jobs, we'll come back to you and we will explain both the summary of the wage data, the market estimates that we've developed, excuse me, as well as the regression formula we're using to develop the pay line. It's classic wage determination. That'll all be public. One of the things that's true about pay determination today in the public sector as opposed to the way we used to conduct it in collective bargaining, it has to be public. Collective bargaining was not. Collective bargaining was done behind closed doors. It was not a public process.
That's not necessarily true because the Department of Labor takes care of all that stuff.
Yeah.
I do collective bargaining. One other question you said too about reviews at the end and stuff like that. Is that in your $30,000 or is that going to be tied to an extra visit to Superior in travel expenses?
The city requested that it not be. So I did not include it in the proposal, so it is not included in the 30,000. That is identical to the process that we used with the county. So when the process, when the pay plan was adopted and there was something to appeal, the steering committee we worked with, employees, representatives of labor, community, they worked with us to design the appeal process, recommended it to the county, the county adopted it. I negotiated with the county administrator what the cost of that appeal process would be, an amount not to exceed, and we didn't spend the amount.
Can you tell us what the amount is?
It was $5,000. We spent 3,900.
Okay. There was talk a while back about that you were going to offer the City of Superior 10 free appeals. Is that just talk?
That, that is news to me.
Okay. But the appeals, the appeals aren't based on a, an individual amount? Because that was one of our conversations in our retreat, that they were based on roughly $250 apiece?
No. The appeal process, the appeal agreement, and administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, is the appeal agreement we made with the county is we would handle appeals at a price of $150 per appeal, and we capped it at $5,000 and we only spent 3,900. There were 26 appeals.
Were any of those successful?
Yes.
How many?
Six. In addition to the six that, that were approved on appeal, there were three others that reflected continuing changes in job responsibilities. And in those cases, we said these jobs need to be studied again and soon, once that's settled down and it's clear what these jobs entail. Because they were in the process of doing some reorganization duties for change like, you know, I described to you. You know, part of the, part of the challenge in these types of studies is that it goes on over a period of time and things don't stay static. I mean, people write a questionnaire today and 90 days from now their job changes. And that's part of what an appeal is for, is really for two things. One, my job changed materially, well, actually three. Two, Carlson Detman, I don't know what you were doing when you rated my job, but that is inaccurate, and I want a chance to, to clarify the record and explain to you why I think you rated me wrong. And, and three, I didn't take the job description questionnaire as seriously as I should have, and we had some of that. And I say, "Now that I understand the significance of what I had to say, I want to say it correctly and accurately." And we don't turn those down.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor McDonald?
Hi. My question is for Andy since you're on the appeals. My question is, obviously, the reason you had some of those appeals was because of the job evaluations weren't filled out to the way they should have been. You probably would have had less appeals. You know, were they not looked into better or?
I think it's one of those things when, like all of us, when we're asked to, to do something, and the job description questionnaire was, was detailed. I had to do one, everyone had to do one, except for our law enforcement, which were covered by a collective bargaining agreement. So we had cases where people didn't take it seriously. In some cases, the department manager missed it. But once we started to explain, and what's nice about Carlson Detman, not only do they involve the, the customer in this process and the benchmarks, the comparables, but they involve employees in orientation, explaining to employees the importance of doing these things, and also coming back after the plan is adopted to explain to employees, here's what the plan is adopted by the government entity, here's the appeals process. And what our, what our, what our take on this was is if an employee filed an appeal, even if the employee made no changes or, or offered a real weak explanation for the appeal, we still ran that through Carlson Detman. Look at it again. You know, for the cost of 150 bucks, we weren't going to deny an employee a chance to, to basically file an appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Esther Dahlbeck?
I have a question. Were some of those appeals done in a group?
Yes, they were. They, they were filed individually, but they were then consolidated because in many cases they made an identical appeal. And, you know, in fact, copied their appeals and each signed them, and so we consolidated those. And, and we gave every employee who afforded, any employee who wanted it, an opportunity to talk to us about their appeal as well. And many of them took this up on that.
And then weren't, weren't some of those employees' wages frozen and now will be frozen until it's determined by a supervisor that they shall get a raise somewhere down
Counselor Dahlbeck, what, what occurred is that we had, when we looked at our compensation plan, we had 40 positions that were off the scale. They were below the scale. They moved up to the scale. We had about 100, if I'm doing my math right, we had about 140, 150 positions that fell into one of the steps on the scale. And then we had approximately 80 positions that fell, they were above the market rate, but they weren't 125% above or in a, in the red circle zone. So they're in the zone that we call the merit zone, which as soon as we develop a merit system, people will be eligible for increases. But their wages weren't frozen because this past year, we afforded every employee at the county a $900 raise, flat raise. And even those individuals that were in that 100 to 120% area, they, they also received that.
And okay, wasn't there demotions then?
No, there was no demotions. No one lost any wages. Some job titles were changed, but no one lost any money. No mon, no funds were taken away. And that was one of the things that struck me with Carlson Detman. And Charlie said it, and also his colleagues have said it, that if we're asking Carlson Detman to come forward, developing a pay, pay plan, that'll result in taking wages away from individuals, you know, find another consultant. No one was worse off. From December 31st of, now if I got the dates right, 2013 to January 1st of 2014. Some people were in that merit zone. And what we're doing, and as, as Mr. Carlson indicated, this is one of the early steps as we look at our compensation plan, but more importantly, as we look at developing our employees. One of the first steps was a personnel policy, which you all adopted. Compensation plan comes first, and we start talking about performance management. How do we measure performance? So that people aren't going to automatically just move through a scale, but they have to at least meet expectations. Lead, meet expectations, you move to the next step. Then what we're going to develop is a reward system for those employees that go above and beyond the call of duty, to be able to reward those folks that, that, that perform exceptionally well. But then, the, the next step, and this is, these steps just, you know, they get refreshed, is looking at how do we develop our, our employees? What do we need to do with our employees to enable them not only to step across, but go upgrades? What sort of skills do they want to take on to be able to perform duties that they're currently not able to perform? Because we want to keep exceptional employees and we want to enable them to see a pathway up in the organization. As, as Charlie indicated, a lot of people come to work in the public sector because they have a sense of service, and, and they're here in their lifelong or at least long-term employees. And we want to be able to provide pathways so that they can continue on with the, with the county, they can bring on new skills, get additional education, and really continue, not only contribute to us, but also contribute to their own sense of self-worth. And so this compensation plan for the county is one of the early steps of a total performance management employee development program.
Thank you.
I have one question. The, the evaluation, not the evaluation, the form for employees to fill out, is that, what's the process in that? Here, you got 15 minutes or here, take it home or?
Well, we, we regard it as a work activity, and certainly I think that for those employees who are regarded as non-exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act, in other words, they have to be paid for the hours that they work. This is work.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Thank you. Got three more questions. My first question has to do with your comment that you said, "The city council decides." Okay? And I agree with that. But I'm hearing, or am I hearing that you have the expertise to say, "Our comparability is Timbuktu," and that's not, that's even though the city council or whoever group decides it, that's the one that we want, but that may not be relevant to our city. Do you give that give and take?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's-
Okay.
Yeah.
I was sure you did, but when you said, "We just, we have the final," okay.
Well, let me, let me, let me, I want to put a corollary on that. Back to your Stevens Point question. We did the market analysis as directed in Stevens Point as an example. We brought back the data. They didn't like the results, so they said, "Drop these four cities."
Okay, no, no.
That's not a real good idea.
Right, no. Okay. And then it would seem to me that benchmarking for varying classes of employees may be different. For, we may choose a different benchmark geographic, whatever, for, is that-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. In fact, the way we, we typically come to you is, is we, we take the workforce and typically we'll break it into three groups: management, midline supervisor, professional, and non-exempt, hourly-based. And usually, the market comparisons are different for those three groups because you're recruiting in different markets.
Makes sense to me, okay. The appeal process, I, I don't view that as a negative. I view that as a positive.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. It seemed to me we have some perhaps negative connotation, but that's, and every employee-
I advocate them.
Okay, right, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, Counselor Olson?
Couple more questions. Are you willing to share what formula you use to get the, calculate your averages? Today?
Well, it depends upon what we decide. Typically, we would say to you, for example, for non-exempt employees, I'm going to give you feedback to what most of our customers are saying, but you may be an exception. For non-exempt employees, typically, our clients are saying, "We probably ought to weight the private sector data 75%, the public sector data 25." Why? Because when we talk to Human Resources and we ask the question, when you're recruiting employees at that level, where do they come from? And most folks have said historically, "Well, probably three out of four come from the private sector." Well, that probably means we ought to put 75% of the weight on the private sector data and 25% on the public sector. Now, I have clients that say, "Look, for 40 years, we've been making our comparisons on public sector employees only. Interest arbitration built that wall around public employment and said, 'Thou shall not consider private sector employees in doing your comparisons.'" Act 10 knocked that wall down. But I'll have clients say, "Let's go 50/50." Okay. It's your call. I'm not going to fight you over 50/50. You may say, "We just want to look at the public sector." Okay, it's your city. That's your call. If you're comfortable saying to the public that we're not going to compare the wages of public employees with private sector employees in our community, that's what we'll do. So that formula is really pretty simple in terms of how we address that. I can show you specifically how the math works. And once we get the data in, there will be a scattergram of data points and a trend line and a formula for that trend line that we use to determine the pay plan, and that will all be a public record. Every single bit of it.
So any of this stuff you'd be willing to do in open records request?
Different question.
You just said all.
It's a different question. That material will be available and in public. If somebody says to us through an open records week, first of all, we're not subject to the open records law. We're a private company. You're subject to the open records law.
Yeah.
Okay? It's not an open record unless you have it. If we have it, or if it's protected by trade secrets, then it, it's our proprietary product. What I want to make sure, though, is that you as a council or employees on their individual appeals have sufficient access to that proprietary product to make reasonable judgments about what you want to do. But that's different than handing it out to our competitors.
Isn't the City of Superior the owner of the product, though, in the end? Those are the results of your, your study?
You are, you are the owner of the pay plan. You are the owner of your work papers relating to that pay plan. You are not the owner of our work papers. We are a private company. We are not a public company.
So what did you do, your request for proposal, based on?
I'm sorry, based on?
What did you do, your request for proposal, based on?
Your RFP.
Okay. But if you're telling me that some of it doesn't pertain to us and we, we can't get it because it's proprietary, do the employees see all the information in these studies?
No.
Can you tell me why?
Because we own it. You're not buying our company, you're buying our advice. There's a difference.
Thank you.
For Dennis Dahlbeck?
Yes, I guess at this point, I don't know if you have any more questions, but I, I would move for approval of this with the understanding that no personnel compensation or benefit changes will occur without the approval of this council. And this protects the employees. And I think that, that would work. I heard somebody say about cost, that cost is 1,000th of our annual budget, which is minuscule. I, I don't think anybody that was making $60,000 could go out and find somebody for that price for $60 to do their finances or taxes. I think that it's a reasonable cost, and it gives us an outside look at where we're at in other, comparing ourselves to other employers.
Point of order, don't we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
So? No, originally.
To get this on the floor, there was a motion.
Originally, we had a motion in a second. We're still under discussion.
We have a motion in second to approve and adopt and award the contract.
We're still under discussion? First of all, thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
I, I will tell you and I will tell this council and the people in the audience and, and my fellow counselors that with all due respect to this city, this staff, the Open Heart Surgery, just was a terrible comparison. The people in this city, the reason this is on this agenda is that it's very, very important to us. It's very important to the 90-some wage classifications that we're looking at. It's very important to the almost 300 employees that we have in the city, and there isn't any one of us here- any one of us here sitting in this room that plans on doing open-heart surgery or making something bloody. My point in all this is I have all the confidence in the world of this city, of our mayor, of our staff, our administration, and I'm not in favor of this. And it's nothing against Carlson Detman. I believe that we are, we, the Act 10 has taken a lot of kick out of everybody, there's no doubt about that, but that's a political thing. That's not how we look to run the city. That's not how we look to have essential services provided to the citizens of this community. What I'm asking my counselors is that we think about this. We have a human resources department. We have a labor management program. We have 10 counselors. We have other staff members that work in all the other aspects of this. We've got public safety, whether it's fire, police. We've got a great community here, and I do not believe that we should be wasting $30,000, excuse me for that phrase, but spending $30,000 of our hard-earned tax dollars, hard-spent tax dollars, on somebody that I don't have enough information on. There's nothing in here that can tell me that anything will be better after this study. And if we get to the end of this study and we don't like the results, we just spent $30,000. I would like to see the council think about this. The other thing that I do have a little heartburn over is that there was a committee set up to do this, and if something is important of this, why did it not go to the Human Resource Committee? Three of you counselors are on the Human Resource Committee. You're on that board. It's your responsibility as counselors to serve this community on those committees just like we all have to do. I would ask that we do not approve this.
Counselor Sweeney?
I have the opposite opinion, and I thought about these varying things, and I have just four comments to make. First of all, our objective is to make it fair and equitable for all employees. I think we would accomplish that with this study. Number two is, we want to be competitive. We want to pay the right wage, not too low, not too high. We want to pay the wage that we should pay. I think this study will do that. I do not think that we have three things why I don't think it should be in-house. One, I don't think Human Resource has the time. Okay? Number two, I think it'd be far more credible, not to Human Resources, but to the city and the city council if we had an outside source to it. And number three is, I don't know if they have the expertise to do what you do. And number four is, the $30,000, as somebody said, it's 1/100th, but it's not a one-year expense. This is, however long we use it, I don't know how long we use it, but it's not just a one-year expense, and we have $30,000 a next year. This is going to go on. I think we have to start somewhere, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, you have a motion on the floor. Would you repeat the motion?
The first motion, excuse me, on the floor is to approve awarding the contract. There is an amendment to that motion. If, it'd probably be easier if the motion maker and second would just accept that amendment, friendly amendment.
Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck?
I guess I would have it repeated. It's vote for approval with the understanding that no personnel compensation or benefit changes will occur without city council approval.
Was there a second to that amendment?
Yes.
I'll ask for consideration of the council on voting on the amendment first to the original motion.
Could you please repeat the amendment?
Dennis, will you read that back? I couldn't write fast enough to catch that.
I would ask for...
I would ask for approval with the understanding that no personnel compensation or benefit
changes will occur without council approval.
Is that agreeable to the second?
Yes.
The motion is an amendment to the original motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. The motion before you is the original motion to adopt and award the contract to Carlson Detman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Please call the roll. Question is, the motion on the floor was to award the contract for this study to Carlson Detman, and there was a motion and a second to do that. So, the question is, adoption or not by the common council?
I would like to request that the counselors use their mics as they vote.
We are going to start with Counselor Sweeney. Counselor Sweeney?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Mazzolia?
Yes.
Counselor Finsland?
Yes.
Counselor Herrick?
Based on phone calls, I received this evening, I'm going to vote no. Phone calls from constituents, so I'm going to vote no at this time.
Dennis Dahlbeck?
Yes.
Esther Dahlbeck?
No.
Counselor Olson?
No.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Bender?
No.
It's 6-4, that motion passes.
Motion carried.
Before we move on to item 8.4, Counselor Sweeney has advised he is abstaining from this discussion and will be stepping out of the room. Item 8.4, Mayor Hagan is requesting approval of an agreement and facility lease with Northwest Wisconsin Community Services Agency for the Senior Center.
Second. Motion and second. I'd like to give a little background in this issue. The Senior Center...
Excuse me, could you turn your mic on?
I'm sorry. The Senior Center is owned by the City of Superior. It's been operating, the center itself and the structure, if you will, has been operated by the senior citizen, senior citizen board of the Senior Center. Over a period of time, there's been some discussion about having that reviewed. They've had some difficulties, most recent and in the past. Not counselor, but Commissioner, Chairman Finn, I should say, and I, who have met with the Senior Center Board on occasion over the last couple, three years, and the original consideration of discussion was to consolidate the operation with Senior Connections. They didn't feel like they wanted to do that, but as time rolled on, it seemed like there needed to be some more discussion on that. Then, we all know what happened. So, we put out two requests for proposals, one to Senior Connections. Rhoda Nagorski is here this evening, the Director of Senior Connections, and we put out the same request for proposal to Northwest Community Services Agency, and Millie Roundsville is here. They both submitted proposals. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we discussed these, we discussed this issue with Senior Connections, with Rhoda, I should say, and with Millie on separate occasions, as to we're interested in them delivering a proposal, and they both did. In discussing this further with them, I'm trying to remember the parties in the room. I think it was the Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, myself, Linda Kadot, the Contract Specialist, and I think Frog Prell, I'm not sure if we were in the room. And we discussed their proposals with them, and it was unanimous in the fact that we saw the proposal by Northwest Community Services to be wider, more deeper, more opportunities for program involvement and so forth. They have the management systems on board. They, in fact, do manage a couple places that involve the seniors, or more than a couple. Millie can speak to that better than I. So, with that, the recommendation is before you, and we'd be happy to let both parties address the council, of course. And should you approve this, we would ask that the council make the approval of the lease contingent upon the termination of the current management contract that the Senior Center, Inc. has. Senior Center, Inc. will be meeting on the 10th, week from today, to discuss their dismissal of the contract and management agreement with the city. So, if you were to approve an agreement here this evening, it should be with contingent upon the release of that current contract, because we can't certainly have two contracts in place at the same time. So, we also, by the way, I think you might know this, we did a fixed asset review of all of our assets, and over time, there's been some improvements, I should say repairs, not improvements at the center. We do recognize that there's some, as owner of the structure, there are some repairs that are needed, and those were divided out into two segments. One is repairs that are of significant need right now structurally, if you will, and others that are less eminent but are needed. There's the cleanliness, tiles above, tiles, carpet, bathrooms, kitchen, and so forth. So, those are more expensive, but they will be, will be scheduled at some point. So, the goal here is to make the facility and the programs as available as possible to all seniors, grow the programs, and have an adequate facility better than what it might be right now. So, that's where we are. So, Counselor Olson, you have a question?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay. So, that's a little background, and I think we have a motion on the floor to approve, and we'll go into discussion on that.
What about the staff that's currently there?
That's an excellent question. The staff that's there, and correct me if I'm wrong, is basically some of the senior board members, senior Inc. board members, operating the office. I think they did have a volunteer come in, and I was asked if they could pay them. I said, "That's not my, you, you're the board, we don't make those decisions." So, I said, "If you wish to pay that volunteer, that's certainly your business." But my understanding is, my understanding is, my casual understanding is that there aren't any employees that are being paid there right now. I would stand to be corrected if that's not so. So, with that being said, it's open for discussion. Does, Millie or Rhoda, would you like to address the council?
You all received a packet of information that outlined what Senior Connections is, excuse me, the programs and services we provide, and some historical context for Senior Connections, along with the relationship with the Superior Douglas County Senior Center. In fact, there is an employee that is employed by the Superior Douglas County Senior Center at this time. Senior Connections believes strongly that we are in the best position to provide services and programs for the seniors in our community. We have a lengthy history of excellent service provision. We have been in the building for many years. We're very aware of the issues and the problems. We're very aware of the needs of the seniors in the community. I am concerned that there was a void in information before we submitted our proposal. When I take a look at the lease agreement that's being proposed for the Northwest Wisconsin Community Services, I can see that there is some information that we did not have that would have significantly changed the proposal that we made, the budget that we submitted. Senior Connections is very familiar with budget. We deal with budgetary issues all the time. We are financially very sound and are quite healthy and aware of budget restrictions. Senior Connections is prepared to take over management of the Superior Douglas County Senior Center immediately. As I said, we're very aware of the needs of the seniors. We have strong relationships with community partners, which only enhance the services that we are able to deliver. Does anybody have any questions about the services and programs that we provide? Or budget?
Rhoda?
Yes.
Rhoda?
Yes.
Yeah, she said yes.
Okay, okay. And, you know, the screen version is about a minute behind of what's actually happening. But anyway, why don't you give us a brief list, even though I have them in front of me, give us a brief list of the many programs and other opportunities that you offer?
Well, Senior Connections is the county aging unit for Douglas County, so we have been appointed to provide services that are mandated under the Older Americans Act. One of those programs that people may be quite familiar with is what's commonly referred to as Meals on Wheels. So, we do home-delivered meals throughout the county. We operate seven congregate meal sites throughout the county. We are designated as the specialized transportation provider for Douglas County. We have a National Family Caregiver Support Program. We have an elder benefits specialist. We provide non-mandated services as well. We provide many, mini workshops that we invite seniors to. We have quite a few things on the agenda this month. We do senior farmer's market voucher distribution. Really, all of the services and programs that are mandated and being delivered to seniors in Douglas County.
Hi, I just have a question on the budget source. It shows, I don't know if this is accurate right now, but it shows that Northwest Community Center budgeted $39,000 from the city, and Senior Connections, is that seeing $62,000? Is there a reason, difference?
Yes. Once we look at the lease that's being proposed for Northwest Wisconsin Community Services, we see something different than we had understood previously with, when the Senior Center was in charge of the building. Most specifically, that repairs that are, that cost over $1,000 would be the responsibility of the city, and they would not come out of the $39,000 stipend. The building is in very serious need of repairs, some of which are part of the capital improvement plan, some of which are not.
Thank you.
Counselor Esther Dahlbeck?
I just would like to say I have to abstain from voting because I am an employee of Senior Connections.
Further discussion?
I've got a question. Senior Connections is not being replaced, you're just bidding on taking over the operation of the day-to-day...
Correct. We are proposing that Senior Connections be allowed to manage the Superior Douglas County Senior Center, where we have been a tenant for many years. We believe that the bifurcated system of delivery of services to seniors has been detrimental to seniors. As the county aging unit, part of our responsibility is to advocate for seniors, and we believe that's what we're doing here now, because we clearly believe it is in the best interest of seniors for one point of delivery for services and programs. for one point of delivery for services and programs, and that that be done by Senior Connections.
I'll ask a point of clarification, I think, am I correct? Your question may have been, would they be displaced?
No, I didn't think they were going to be. I didn't think they were going to be replaced, but I've been there and I've had meals there. So what you want to do is to take over the general area where they eat and play cards and stuff like that?
That's correct, and take over.
There's no actual program that you're going to be running?
Oh, no, we would definitely provide programming for seniors.
Okay.
We want to.
Well, yeah, I understand, that's, that would be, that would be part of it, yeah.
And that program would, programming would be above and beyond what we are providing now.
May I, I think for clarification, are you, see, they currently are operating the facility right now. So they're currently there now, so they're just, no, they're not, you're not there?
No, we are tenants in the building. We are tenants of the Superior Douglas County Senior Center.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you, Rhoda.
I'm dressed appropriately, it's planting night at the community garden. I'm Millie Rowlandville, I'm the Director of Northwest Community Services. Our organization has been here in Superior since nineteen sixty-seven. We're what's called a community action program. So we have a few unique things by nature. We have a tripart board. So a third of our board is government, a third is low-income, and a third is business and industry. Our purpose is to meet the needs of our communities and to provide services to increase self-sufficiency. So through all our five counties, we provide services to about fifteen thousand people a year. Our largest population does include seniors, unfortunately, with some of the activities that we provide to the public, which are used by obviously multiple age groups. Specific to the senior population, we do administer the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, which provides volunteers stations out in the community for people that are fifty-five or older. We house the Experienced Works Program out of our Ashland office as well. We operate a senior program, some intergenerational leadership activities throughout our Ashland building, pairing seniors with younger individuals, passing on life skills, things like that. We do operate two adult daycare programs for Alzheimer's, one of them on Fifth and Tower. We do contract with Senior Connections currently for transportation and meals for some of our participants, as we have since we've started those programs. And we do operate a retirement living facility. That was something new that, again, a situation where an organization had looked at dissolving, and we had picked up a retirement living center. So we're providing independent living opportunities for seniors in the rural areas. But I just wanted to answer the budget question as well. We did not get provided a copy of the lease prior to submitting our proposal either. I mean, just to be clear on that. Our organization is a fairly large organization. I mean, by nature of our business, we simultaneously run fifty-five programs at once. So for us, we have Solid Rock in town. We have our building, which people usually see as more of the free store, the food shelf, the tax site, those sort of services. We also have a health services office. We do the WIC program, the Birth to Three, the prenatal cure coordination. And then we took over the Solid Rock back in nineteen ninety-nine. And we've continued that mission with the soup kitchen. The men's shelter added some gardening, added a food bank, a warehouse license. But that's where we had approached, and our board chair is here as well, our board had discussed this, on our role within the community and making sure that all of the community needs are being met. Senior services is something that does come up on a needs assessment. Seniors are looking for a place to gather, they're looking for social activities. And we also have a group of younger generation, our clients, Salvation Army clients, that are looking to pair up with some of those seniors as well, to be able to pass on some of their skills, talents that they may have. So we looked at it as an opportunity to continue to provide much-needed service in our community, but also look at what they're doing currently that works, what doesn't work. As a community action agency, we do do needs assessments every three years. That's a statutory requirement. So making sure that we're always looking at our community is what are our needs now? What needs are changing, what needs could be improved? But that was kind of our role in responding to the proposal, was what we'd be able to provide. It's within the mission of our organization, and it's something that we're accustomed to. We wouldn't be moving any of our current programming, obviously. I know that's been kind of a concern, that we'd be taking what we're currently operating at one of our other locations and moving there. That was not the intent of our proposal. Our intent was to hire a center manager. We do have a volunteer coordinator on staff, so we would continue with the volunteer involvement in the organization. We are an umbrella agency, so we have maintenance staff, we have finance staff. We've been around since the sixties. We do an A-133 audit. Each year, we manage over a million dollars in government funds. So we have our auditors come through, as the city can appreciate, and they spend two and three weeks with you. We're always getting monitored by some of our federal funding sources, stimulus funds. So we have those systems in place where for us to be able to operate another program, we can track our revenue and expenses separately. We can guarantee that we're not using one program's money to spend on another program's money. We have segregation of duties in place, we have our unique board. But those were kind of the reasons why we submitted our proposal. And if anybody had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. My board chair is here as well. Jack's on my board, that's why he abstained, obviously. He didn't want to be involved in this discussion from that level. So I'll leave it at that unless there's questions.
Any questions of Millie? Thank you. Any further discussion?
You do have a motion in a second on the floor from Counselor McDonald, second by Counselor Fennessy, with a recommendation from the mayor that it be approved contingent upon the termination of the current lease with the Superior Senior Center. Is that acceptable to the motion maker in second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried.
I'm going to grab Counselor Sweeney. Item eleven point one is an ordinance amending the traffic code, disabled parking zones by adding eleven seventeen Coming Avenue.
Heard a motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any further business to come before this body? Stand adjourned.
Big carry, bye now.
Bye.